Good evening, everyone. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Here.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember Reinerkert?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Thank you. We have no introductions or presentations tonight, so we're going to move straight to the public hearing. At this time, the council recessed to conduct the public hearing regarding a request for a zoning code text amendment pertaining to ground story residential in certain B2 mixed use developments. Ms. Graves, do you wish to enter some exhibits to the record?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit 1, which is an affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the St. Louis County on October 21st, 2025. Exhibit 2, which is an affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the legal ledger on October 21, 2025. Exhibit 3, an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the Webster Kirkwood Times on October 24th, 2025. Exhibit 4 is a list of property owners whom notice of this public hearing was sent to. Exhibit 5 is a viewer map showing the list of property owners to whom the public hearing notice was sent to. Exhibit 6 is a memorandum from the Planning and Development Services Director to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated October 15th, 2025. Exhibit 7 is the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dated October 16th, 2025. And Exhibit 8 is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Hawes, who will present this issue to the City Council?
That would be Jonathan Raich, Planning and Development Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, as was mentioned, this is a public hearing for a zoning code text amendment, and it's related to ground story residential in our mixed-use development. So, as I'm sure you all remember, this was initiated with feedback from you all related to the mixed-use project at 300 North Kirkwood Road. And when it came about that our code currently prohibits residential use on the ground story of mixed-use developments. And so, in those discussions with that project, you all directed staff to draft language to allow for ground story residential, so that language was drafted and brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I will, oop, I'm sorry. So, this slide is just a summary. You have in your packets the proposed language, but we reviewed the various provisions of the code that directly and indirectly deal with this. And our recommendations are to add language to Section 2534, Section I-4, triple I, and Roman numeral 4, I guess, which more clearly restricts non-residential requirements to frontages that are mandatory commercial on the framework plan. And I will, I know you can't read this, but as a reminder, this is the framework plan that is embedded in our code and came from the downtown master plan. And those mandatory commercial streets are those that have the red lines on them. So, again, specifying that when it's on those streets, those frontages require commercial, still holding that and clarifying that. The second recommendation is we're adding sections, or proposing to add sections that address multiple frontage and corner lots, which would allow a mixture of commercial, residential, and utility uses on frontages that don't require commercial. And so, that's one of the cases that the next public hearing you'll see in practice, that property has frontage both mandatory and not mandatory for commercial. So, where we don't require commercial, the proposed language would provide an option for developers to include commercial, residential, or utility, such as parking. Also, the proposed language would clarify that residential or non-residential can be on the second story or above, clarify that the mixed-use height bonus, so again, mixed-use developments that meet certain criteria can go up to 60 feet rather than 40 feet. So, it clarifies that that bonus is only for ones that meet our minimum requirements, so the minimum amount of commercial, being the whole frontage, or 20% to 40% if it's a multiple building development, because a mixed-use development in itself just means there's more uses, or multiple uses. But to get that bonus, you would have to meet our criteria for the minimum amount required. And lastly, it aligns the architectural guidelines with the zoning code, so just making some cross-reference in the architectural guidelines that defer to the zoning code when we're talking about land use. So, these were drafted in an effort to accommodate what you all had requested. Again, it was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission, they reviewed and discussed it, and ultimately recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. So, that's my summary, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Lizzo?
Thanks, Jonathan. So, I just, I trust that you and the rest of your staff have studied changing all of this for our B2 mixed use downtown, and there are likely no unintended consequences of making this change across the board for this one development that we're looking at right now, that we really feel like it's more appropriate.
I had a nipple for every time I've heard you ask about unintended consequences. I could retire, I think.
Vocabulary, yeah.
Yes, we looked at, we, you know, we're not perfect, but we looked at the entire code that we think could be related somehow, and tried to address it as best we could. And, I mean, really, this language, it allows them the ability to do this, right? So, it's not requiring it, so I think this is a way, again, to look at things kind of case by case, allow more options for it, and go that way, so.
I mean, me reading it, it seemed like, oh, this was a good idea on our part. It makes the code better, more flexible, and kind of, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think, yeah, I agree. I think the circumstance of this specific, well, we're not in that public hearing, but corner properties that have two frontages, you know, I think it brought out a specific situation that probably wasn't envisioned when we were originally drafting some of these things, so.
Right. For this specific property, the commercial is really only required along Kirkwood Road and just a part of that corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. David, has anyone completed a card to speak regarding this proposal?
Mayor and Council, there are no requests for comment at this time.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill is on the agenda under New Business as Bill 11097 for first reading consideration. Now, we will go into our second public hearing regarding a request for a B2 mixed-use development plan at 300 North Kirkwood Road. Ms. Graves, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Exhibit 1, which is the affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the St. Louis County on October 21st, 2025. Exhibit 2, an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the legal ledger on October 21, 2025. Exhibit 3, which is an affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the Webster Kirkwood Times on October 24th, 2025. Exhibit 4 is a list of property owners whom notice of the public hearing was sent to. Exhibit 5 is a viewer map showing the list of property owners to whom notice of the public hearing was sent to. Exhibit 6 is a memorandum from City Planner 2 to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated October 15th, 2025. And Exhibit 7 is the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dated October 16th, 2025. Finally, Exhibit 8 is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hawes, who will present this issue to the City Council?
This will be presented by City Planner 2, Amy Lowery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm just going to go over a few things that we've seen before, but this is the subject site. It's in the northwest corner of Adams Avenue and Kirkwood Road. Existing conditions, it's a vacant lot at this point in time. The revised site plan does show the residential units on the ground floor, but the change in the overall square footage and the square footage of the commercial spaces in the front really didn't change that much. They did have to reduce some of the parking. It's now gone from 111 spaces before down to 105 spaces. And the applicant has also agreed to put some speed humps on this drive, north-south drive, so that was at the request of the adjacent property owner. That's not on this plan, but it is part of the resolution, the conditions of the resolution. Again, the revised floor plans that show these four units that will be on the ground floor, and these will be two-story units that will have direct access and entrances from Adams Avenue there. They do still have 60 units total. And so, then on the second floor, you'll see the second floor of those four units, and then a mix of other units that are, you know, studios through three bedrooms, then third floor, and fourth floor. They did provide some revised elevations. Of course, this will be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board, but the illustrated elevations do show that the building height will be less than 60 feet. The landscape plan was revised. There are still a few things that we need to have tweaked for the final site plan, but the major thing is because these four apartments now are closer to Adams Avenue, instead of the required seven canopy trees on this street, they've reduced that to four, so that requires a further modification in the process. They also did, again, at the request of the neighbor, agree to plant some evergreens in this corner to, because the dumpster is here, to kind of get that shaded from the view from the condominiums there. And just the mix of the landscape that is proposed. They are still requesting the one modification that's from the required landscape buffer along the condominium project to the east. That's going to be a fence and a sidewalk instead of a landscape buffer. And then, as I stated before, because those residential units are coming closer to Adams, they do require a modification to provide four canopy trees instead of the required seven. Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this again, and their conditions of note were the two modifications I just discussed. There are some changes needed to the final site plan for the speed humps that are being proposed, or speed bumps. There does need to be one more accessible space in the parking area, that's a minor thing, and then just some simple changes to the landscape plan. So, with the development plan, there are review criteria that should be kept in mind, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did feel that this changed plan met their development plan review criteria. I'm available for any questions that you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Does the applicant wish to say anything additional? Okay. Questions?
You mentioned a couple of modifications to what we, will those be updated? I know if we vote on this tonight, will you all have whatever updated landscape plan?
The resolution that is in your packet anticipates that a lot of those changes can be made on the site development plan that will be coming, they'll be back again before Planning and Zoning and for City Council for a final site plan. So, those can be made at that time, they don't need to necessarily be updated now.
Okay. Councilmember Jacsetic, we will not be voting on this until November 20th.
Okay.
What other questions? Councilmember Lizzo?
Thank you. Hi, Amy. I'm wondering, so, because of the change that likely we were going to approve here about ground floor entrance on Adams, and the, now the fewer number of trees, is, I understand, right, that's county maintenance, they don't like trees in their right-of-way. There's no way of putting trees in tree wells or anything like that? I mean...
One of the trees is already going in a tree well, it's in a patio area here. I'm not sure that there's even any room. I mean, this portion of the building is one foot away from the property line.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, across Kirkwood Road, along where Sunset 44, whatever that, the Adams Place development over there has tree wells, and without trees, and I'm just wondering.
They do have one additional tree already on Kirkwood Road, more than they needed. They also have, although these are canopy trees, they have a couple of, I mean, not canopy, they have a couple of under-story trees here and here that are above what is required.
So, you're saying they're already overfulfilling the plan?
I mean, those are three that you could offset, the three that are being...
Yeah. I just think it would make a nice streetscape to try and get plants along, plants, trees along there, if possible. And I'm not gonna jump up and down about them, but if there were a way to, you know, add, I don't, is that a five-foot sidewalk along Adams?
I believe it's a six-foot sidewalk, that's what we require in downtown.
Well, if they could maybe look at the tree wells across the street, by Adams Place, and think about doing a similar, if that would be allowed, if it's within our right-of-way?
And they were just replaced over there, right? They're new things.
Along Adams?
Along Adams, on the west side of Kirkwood Road, along by where Adams Place is.
Yeah, so I think, I think those were done in a time before when county may have entertained them. County does not, even in tree wells, they don't, they don't allow trees in their right-of-way.
Of course. We made a fuss by St. Peter's Church and...
Unless, unless the city agrees to take over maintenance of everything behind the curb, and I would not recommend getting into a habit of doing that.
Okay. I wasn't sure exactly where the right-of-way is and all of that.
Yeah, it's...
Well, I hope if trees are being taken up, well, that's a different story, nevermind.
The right-of-way is pretty close to the front of the...
Yeah, it's, the property line is, I'm sorry, Jonathan, I'm getting you at the back of the, property line is this line right here.
Yeah.
So, and, I mean, you're almost at the sidewalk.
It doesn't get that much room.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the other question is, and I apologize for my now faulty memory, I thought with the previous version of this project, that I had requested and council went along with my request, that we not put in tulip poplars. Now, these are columnar, I'm not quite as familiar with those, but I do know that tulip poplars in general, they have their pros, they also have their cons. They grow quickly, they're an interesting tree that blooms, whatever, they've got interesting shaped leaves, but they're also very prone to breaking because they grow quickly, so in storms and whatever. And I was just wondering if maybe you and Brandon and whoever might work with the developer and think about possibly other, I sent you a list of trees that MIRMAC is studying, so I would just say maybe switch those.
Yeah, I can talk with Brandon, the city forester, before the next meeting, and if that's something we need to change out, to put that as condition in the resolution, we can do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Is the landscaping gonna be sprinkled? I didn't notice any.
Yes, it's gonna be.
Okay, super.
We require irrigation, so plants.
Thank you, that's all.
Amy, I have a question, is the fence still remaining, the existing fence, is that still remaining?
The plan is for it to remain, and also for them to take out the modular block in front of the limestone wall that's there. And the plan is to save that if they can.
Councilmember Schaefer?
So, what I understood, and that meant we were out there and walked it, so, yes, that, take the block wall out in front, and then re-tuck point the existing that's behind there, and we're gonna try and save that, and they wanna paint the fence back to what it was. But the trees, we're gonna go a little further down on the backside of the, that abuts the condos that are there now.
Right. These are all remaining trees on the condo site, these bigger circles, and then, yes, the other evergreens were gonna be up in this area.
Okay. Okay, well, we talked about a little, and we can work, okay, I'll stop.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing no further questions, this, if there's any public comments. Oh, sorry. Right. Do we have any public comments for tonight?
Mayor and Council, there are no requests for comment this evening.
Okay, sorry, there we go. Into hearing no further discussion, the resolution will be on the November 20th council meeting agenda for consideration. Okay. Now, we will move into the public comments section of the council meeting. Or I'll let you read it.
Your Honor, the public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the City Council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question-and-answer session, and the City Council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the City Council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk if action is needed.
Good, thank you. David, has anyone filled out a comment card who wishes to make a public comment?
Mayor and Council, we have a few requests for comment this evening. The first from Lynn Andre Zhang.
Hi, my name is Lynn, and I'm a sixth grader at Villa G Maria Montessori School here in Kirkwood. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you tonight regarding my petition to ban plastic bags. The world uses five trillion plastic bags every year. That's five and 12 zeros. This is a huge and mind-blowing number, because people mainly use not one, not two, but even three plastic bags to wrap around their purchases, because plastic bags rip easily. They use all this plastic to simply carry their groceries from the store to the car. Sure, some people reuse their plastic bags for some other purposes, but in the end, plastic bags always end up in nature, polluting natural habitats, littering the side of the road, or end up in the landfill. Most people throw away their plastic bags without a care in the world, thinking that they will decompose eventually. But no, the truth is, it takes more than 100 years to degrade, and even then, plastic never goes away forever. The particles rest in the soil contaminating the earth. There have been many states, counties, and cities that have banned or enforced restrictions on bag to make people pay for them. Twelve of 50 states have restrictions concerning plastic bags. There are few cities that have actually banned them altogether. Some of them include Boston, Massachusetts, Chicago, Illinois, Los Angeles, California, New York, New York, San Francisco, California, Seattle, Washington, and Washington, D.C. The cities and states that have put fees on plastic bags are California, where stores charge a 10 cent minimum, New York charges 5 cent for a paper bag, of which 2 cents goes to local governments, and 3 cents goes to New York's Environmental Protection Fund, and the District of Columbia charges 5 cents for both paper and plastic. The average American household grocery shops every week, and there are 52 weeks a year. So, if you take California's fee alone, that is approximately $500 spent per family every year. Many people envision the increasing use of paper bags as a solution, but the real answer lies in fabric bags. Even though paper bags can be recycled, trees are still being cut down and formed into paper bags. We need those trees for other things. Not only do fabric bags last a lifetime if cared for properly, but some also come with an insulating layer that keeps both hot and cold items at their proper temperature throughout the day and/or car ride home. You just need to keep them in your trunk and bring them out when the time comes to go grocery shopping. An even better thing to do would be to use fabric bags for shopping for anything, not just for groceries. Now, you may think, but this isn't going to change the earth's climate and trash problems. But think about this, imagine yourself as a hummingbird over a wildfire ravaging the land. Now, imagine that you throw down a drop of water onto that wildfire. A drop isn't going to end it, but thousands of millions of droplets can. And that is true with our plastic bag problem. If we work together and spread the word, a storm will appear and end this wildfire, and you. Just doing your very best will help. Together, we can put out this fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. That was very well done. And I just want everyone to know that Lynn took a poll, a petition, she had a petition of her schoolmates, and I think maybe some parents and teachers as well, and sent that to me. And she would really like Kirkwood to ban plastic bags. However, our hands are tied, because our state legislature made a law that cities cannot ban the use of plastic bags. So, I told her she needs to work with her state rep and her state senator to see if she can get them to change their minds.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Ron Weiss.
Gibbons, councilmembers. My name's Ron Weiss, I'm a resident here in Kirkwood. This is my first time attending a meeting. I brought some photos for each of you. I know this might be a little unusual, but it illustrates my concern about the work that's being done on the train station, and in particular, the copper sheet metal work that's been done on the cupola. I have real concerns about the work that's been done. These photos are pretty self-explanatory, except for the first one. And the first picture is of the cupola from three months ago that I took, and it is showing the apron of copper on the cupola from the 1985 Restoration Project. And what it shows is that first two pieces of copper are lined up, that seam right on the middle of the cupola, and they work their way back to the roof of the train station. The gentleman that put the roof on now decided on their own, and I guess they were left to their own devices, to put the copper on from the roof forward to the center of the cupola, necessitating that they walk all over the brand-new copper that they just put down, and that is illustrated in these photos as well. So, again, my concern is that they've adulterated brand-new copper, very expensive material, and clearly, I think we need more oversight on this project, especially on this copper cladding, because there's a lot more copper that's gonna go on that roof before it's done. I gotta say, if we need to know what good looks like, we don't have to go far. All we have to do is look across the street at the Kirkwood Station Plaza Building and look up. That is beautiful metalwork that they've done there. And if we cross the parking lot here, over to the memorial walkway, and we look up at the cupola, and then we look at the plaza building, and then we look at the cupola, what's wrong with that picture? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. So, my hope is that, I think maybe what we need to do is summon some of the spirits from the 1941 Restoration Project, and those citizens and those council people, you know, at the time, that was the Missouri Pacific that owned the rail, and they wanted to make massive changes to the building, and the council and the citizens stood up and said, "No, we want to preserve our building." And the building that we have today in large S is the building that they built in 1893. So, that legacy that they've passed on to us is a gift, and I think this building deserves our best effort.
Thank you, Ron. If you would give those pictures to David, he will distribute them to us. Thank you very much.
Well, anyway, in closing, I just wanted to say that she's a grand building, and the form and function, it's much grander than that. That stonework is great stonework. It holds up these beams of oak, which hold up our roof, which is clad in...
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alex Wisinski. My name's Alex Wisinski, and I've worked for the past 20 years as a business and management consultant within the power and utilities sector, and I'd like to share some data regarding the new electric rates that I have not seen publicly made. Prior to our recent rate increase, the average cost of electricity paid by residential customers of Kirkwood Electric was 14.35 cents per kilowatt hour. That cost put Kirkwood Electric's prices in the 84th percentile across Missouri, and was the eighth most expensive average cost among Missouri utilities in 2024. The increase that was put through in October was the largest utility rate increase across Missouri this year, and will raise the average residential cost of electricity to roughly 16 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. This represents a 53% increase since 2021, just five years ago. This represents a 53% increase since 2021, just five years ago. For comparison, over the five, same five year period, the nationwide inflation rate for electricity was 38%, and the statewide rate for Missouri was 19. There's been no insight into how the 14.8% was calculated, and it was specifically called out in the materials from the city's consultants that a cost of service study was not performed. This goes against standard practices surrounding utility ratemaking, which is a process that involves a full accounting of the operating costs and capital asset values of the utility, data which cannot be found online for any year past 2023. But more importantly, I'm here to raise the alarm on the affordability crisis that we're risking creating within our community. There's a concept known as wallet share, which is the percentage of monthly income that any specific expense represents within a household. Research from within the utilities industry has shown that 6% of wallet shares where households start having issues making payments on bills. Approximately 34% of Kirkwood households have an annual income of 75,000 or less. For thousands of our neighbors, paying any monthly bill of $375 requires making tradeoffs between paying for food, clothing, and other necessities. Under the new rates, the average combined Kirkwood Utilities bill will now equal roughly $400 per month. There are payment assistance options that we should be offering to our residents that we currently don't, and many have been successful across the industry at other utilities to help minimize the amount of bad debt that they accrue. Under normal ratemaking guidelines, a surge in bad debt represents an increase in operating costs, which then must be recovered by higher rates, which lead to greater affordability challenges, and the cycle continues. This is known as a death spiral, and it can lead to a utility being sold based on its inability to sustain its ongoing business operations. In closing, I want to urge the city to start running the electric department, not as just a power distribution grid, but as a utility business that follows the leading practices established by its peers and keeps its promises surrounding transparency, accountability, and financial stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond Scher.
Mayor, council members, my name is Raymond Scher. And I'm a 15 year resident here in Kirkwood, also my first time here at a, at a meeting. I'm making comments here today to ensure that you, mayor and the council, realize the importance and strong interest in the workings of the electric utility department by the citizens of Kirkwood. I can only, you know, bravo the gentleman before me. Particularly the items raised by articles in the Webster Kirkwood Times, which I hope all of you have read, authored by Colin Sucklin dated October 27th and 3 November 2025. These articles state that a customer, on average, can expect an increase of 14.8% in their upcoming utility bills. Apparently, this increase was facilitated by the upgrades to our electric infrastructure, and I quote Mayor Gibbons, "the electric department overspending its budget." The particulars were further spelled out in the article as system upgrades and spikes in the purchase of electricity that necessitated the use of roughly $4 million from the Kirkwood Electric Reserve Fund and about $9.3 million from the city's general fund reserves. It states that this council knew nothing about what was going on with the deficit until August of this year. I applaud the city engaging an outside consultant to help determine the cause for this, and I hope that lessons learned or potentially negligent personnel are held accountable. I did find it odd that in the very last paragraph of the article, the mention of Director Mark Petty, who has served the department for the last two decades and oversaw the entire electric system upgrade, has suddenly retired. Mayor, council members, I certainly look forward to you becoming more involved in the oversight of this department and delivering the results of the outside audit while digging deeper into the practices and operations of the electric utility department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are no additional requests for comment at this time.
We'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second for the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay. All in favor. Oh, do a roll call. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Councilmember Zimber abstains because he was not here. Right, okay, the consent agenda has passed. We'll move to unfinished business. Bill 11094.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a traffic signal crossing agreement with St. Louis County and the installation, maintenance, and operation of traffic signal and crosswalk enhancements at the county maintained intersections of Big Bend Road and Couch Avenue and Big Bend Road and Guyer Avenue in the city of Kirkwood, Missouri.
Are there any questions or comments regarding Bill 11094? Councilmember Litzo?
Thank you, Mayor. So we don't know what the cost of this kind of upfitting is yet to the, to Kirkwood. I think we're talking about doing enhanced crosswalks at Couch and at Guyer, and I was just wondering, depending on the cost that the county is going to provide to us at some later date, if we have the option of, if, if necessary, just choosing one of the two, like put, you know, the enhanced crosswalk at Guyer, which I think is a much more prominent, bigger, more complicated intersection, and I think it would benefit especially from these proposed changes, if the contract would allow us to just choose one. And I'm assuming that the internally lit signs, I think those are a great idea. They definitely help people see the signs well in advance of getting close to an intersection, hoping that, because we would be taking on maintenance and all of that cost after the fact, if, if we already know from our own experience that internally lit signs that we have already are performing well, and I'm guessing that we want to continue with this. Is there staff that might be able to answer this question?
Chris, can you come up and, I think I maybe asked that about this last time?
Well, we talked about, there's no cost involved yet, so.
Yeah, so right now, county hasn't bid the project, so we don't know the cost for the exact, so LED edelit, streetlight signs, and then also painting of the signals is what's involved for this agreement. Enhancement of actual crosswalks, county has elected to do that in their project with no cost to the city. So the, the enhanced crossing, as far as the striping goes, county is going to be doing that regardless of our, of this agreement.
But as far as the lighted signs and black paint or whatever else, I'm just sort of fast forwarding, depending on the cost, if it's some, you know, a bridge too far on the full, the full package, if we would be allowed to just choose one of the possibly, you understand what I'm saying?
That's certainly possible. But we could work on that with county.
Okay.
We're not committing, is what you're asking to.
At this point, you're, we're, we're saying we're interested.
We're interested, yes. I, yeah, and waiting to see what is the price tag. So, I mean, yeah, I was hoping that maybe we could choose one if, you know, depending, if it's, if the entire package is way too costly, that maybe we can look at doing the Guyer crossing. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Settich?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinicker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Bill has passed final reading. We move to new business, Bill 11095.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance. Okay, this is, thank you. This is an ordinance granting approval of a major site plan for parking lot and a special use permit for outdoor storage at the property known as 444 East Elliot Avenue, subject to certain conditions.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Bill 11095 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Councilmember Litzo?
Did you know I wanted to ask that question? You could tell by body language. I was just wondering, so are all the, and actually, I mean, looking at the tree preservation plan, I mean, some of these trees definitely need to go, so I'm kind of glad that they're going to clean this, this site up. I was just wondering, I didn't notice a sprinkling system for the landscaping around the parking lot. Does anybody, anybody answer that question? Ryan?
Oh, okay, hold on. We need to suspend. I couldn't think of the word. Robert's Rule of Order. No, we, I'm sorry, you can go ahead and come on up, but we, oh.
Amy can answer the question.
Amy will say that we require an irrigation plan. We just do not have one yet.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's, it's.
It's a required.
Yeah.
I have a question for you, though, Amy. I know this is industrial, but across the street behind our homes, and people live in those homes, and I'm very concerned about the fencing that's going to be the chain link with the plastic green stuff woven in it. Is it possible for us to make a motion that a different fence is considered for that?
I mean, yes, I mean.
What are you looking for? I guess there's a, are we looking for shadow box? Were you looking for the concrete ones that we required at Mobile On The Run and other places?
Just something that's more attractive than plastic green in chain link. I could be a wooden fence. I'm, I don't.
Over buffers.
Since it's first reading, if we're not quite sure.
Okay.
What we want the motion to be. I would recommend, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy and Jonathan, that maybe we should work on a substitute bill for the second reading, and maybe staff work with, you know, developing, and to find out maybe proper terminology to use in a substitute bill. That's just my recommendation.
Can we suspend, apparently there's suspend Robert's Rules of Order? Okay, is there?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, now. I'm sorry. Get you up and down a couple of times.
Just the only thing I wanted to point out was that the site that has the fence around it is facing, is, is not facing the residential. That's, that's a lot that's landscaped and everything. So you've got the building obscuring from the, from the residential lots, you have the, the building blocking the fenced in area. So it's, I, I don't, I do have a plan in my folder. Oh, you have.
Fence area is behind the building. The parking lot that we're talking about is across the street from the homes.
Parking lot, and it's not going to be fenced.
Nope.
The parking lot won't be fenced, it's just the, the outdoor storage area is being fenced, and that's fa, directly facing the other commercial property.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we no, just keep going, okay. All right. So any other questions, comments? No, okay. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11096, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay?
11095.
95, not 96, yeah.
95, sorry, sorry, sorry. 95. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay. The bill has passed first reading approval. Now we'll go to Bill 11096.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the municipal code, chapter 25, zoning and subdivision related to no impact home-based business regulations in section 2545K and other related sections.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Bill 11096 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11096, say aye.
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 Mayor, I think I'm going to recuse myself on this. It's my understanding that there may no.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McLean. Okay. Okay, we already, I think we already vote. All those opposed, say nay. The bill has passed first reading approval. Bill 11097.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the municipal code, chapter 25, zoning and subdivision by changing the regulation of ground story residential for mixed use developments in the B2 Central Business District.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Bill 11097 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11097, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. The bill has passed first reading approval. Bill 11098.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, chapter 14, article 8, section 14406, schedule F, no right turns, by adding a new location on West Maple Avenue at 10820 Manchester Road.
Do I have a motion and accept, and a second to accept Bill 11098 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
I have some questions.
Councilmember McLean.
Maybe there's someone from the city that can help me out on this. When we did a speed study on the road, what was the average speed limit on the road?
Have that? By any chance? I don't have it, I'm sorry.
On Meyer Road, South Meyer.
Maple.
Maple.
Didn't do a speed study.
Didn't do a speed, all right.
No. This is, this is a request for a no right turn sign.
Right, but that's because of, they said there's speed or speeders and incidents. So I'm just asking, I'm trying to find bolster of the argument, and I was hoping you'd come to say, oh, yeah, we did a speed study, and they were going 40 miles an hour. Question you did.
Unfortunately, no.
You did, how about the number of cars on the, on, on South Maple? Did you do a traffic study to see the number of cars?
No.
How many incidences have there been reported to the police in South Maple in the west?
I know, I know of none.
So you're coming to us, asking us for this based upon traffic, safety, and operational concerns, vehicular conflicts, and enhanced traffic flow, but yet we don't have any speed studies, any number of cars, no incidents that we know of. So what, what, how are you basing your decision?
So originally, this was a development of CVS for the right turn. As, so currently today, and as long as CVS has been there, there's been a no right turn sign on West Maple. And we had a group of residents that live on West Maple, and seven of the eight petitioned the city to make some improvement there, and SCIT took a look at it, and it was determined to have the no left turn, sorry, no right turn on West Maple currently. That's only on the development of CVS. It is not enforceable by the police because it's on their development. It's not in our Code of Ordinances. So this would reinforce, this bill, and putting this into our ordinances, would reinforce that. So what I'm bringing you tonight is not really about the traffic that's on West Maple. It's, it's bringing forth that petition from the residents on West Maple to further enforce that no right turn sign.
Don't have any studies, though, to back up? If I get a petition from my street to, to do a no right turn onto Dixon off of Adams, because we get, just flying off of Adams down to Dixon, if I get eight of, eight people right there to come and sign a petition, bring it to SCIT, they'll approve it without?
Good question. I can't answer that tonight.
But I'm, based on this, I'm not in favor of this.
I have some concerns about four. I have some concerns about forcing people to make a left and go out to Kirkwood Road. And if they want to go north, they have to cross two lanes of Kirkwood Road. And sometimes the traffic is backed up well past Maple. It just sounds like an accident waiting to happen. I talked to Chris earlier, and he said there's a way of going out the front, but you still have to cross over if you want to go north. You still have to cross over. It just, I'd, I'd think I'd like to see a speed study done to see what kind of speeds we're talking about on Maple, and maybe.
Understood.
Maybe the answer is not. Do what, Chris?
That we can come back with that information.
Yeah, and then maybe, you know, speed bumps would be, because they said in their letter that there was increased speeding. And CVS has been there for nine years, so. Councilmember Reinicker?
I mean, if they're speeding, it could be people coming off of Kirkwood Road, avoiding the corner.
That's one thing they said in their letter.
They'd have to be able to know that the speeders are making the right turn out of CVS. I mean.
Understood.
If I speed a study, I don't know whether that would even help.
Depends on where they put the speed study sign down, further down the street. If we go over there and look, that's about halfway down is that entrance on Maple. So I have a hard time understanding how somebody can make a right turn and get it, you know, speeding because you're going to stop right again, and that's half a block down the road. So, and again, if it's up there and it's not enforceable, maybe people will not make a right turn. But there was no ordinance when this was all put in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a new ordinance we're trying to create, and I think people should be able to leave out of CVS and the bank there. Just a lot of people, I do watch, I've been over that direction, and they go down the street and go right into Waterway and do their car wash, or vice versa, so. Do we want to all just table this and do a speed study and then come back with it?
I think we need to go ahead and vote on it and ask for a speed study.
Okay.
Done?
All right. Your call, Mayor.
Councilmember Litzow, did you have something?
Well, as I understand it, if I recall correctly, the no-right turn out of the CVS was a condition of approval of that development. Now, where the sign was located, I don't recall. Apparently, the sign was disappeared for a while. And yeah, enforcement, it, you know, again, it's, you know, kind of voluntary compliance, people being good neighbors and whatever, and not acting like nitwits driving down a residential street. But, you know, you can't control everything. So, you know, I understand that, that the residents on West Maple, and many of them who have kids, and they fortunate to have sidewalks, I think, on both sides of the road there. But I was up there recently seeing people speeding down West Maple. They weren't making a right turn, they were speeding on West Maple. So maybe two issues of, you know, they don't want additional, I mean, they are public streets, but, you know, I could see looking and continuing this, or, or looking into this further before we have second reading, because I'm sure the, the residents obviously are looking for some relief from, from the situation going on right now, and I appreciate staff looking into this. Thank you.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think we need more information. I think just based from when my son worked at CVS, there's traffic going on in multiple directions. CVS, Waterway, the bank, Manchester, Kirkwood Road. There's a lot of factors in here, more than just that sign. So I, I think, I think we need to study this a little bit further. I mean, it could be that, you know, a speed study might be nice, but, you know, if, if the issue is speed on Maple, then, you know, maybe just some, some traffic calming measures, speed bumps, something like that, might do the trick, so.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
And I agree. I think we should vote on it tonight. The requests from the residents look like they were concerned about traffic calming for safety. I don't think that no-right turn is the strongest traffic calming. So I think tonight, if we vote on it, and if SCIT wants to revisit what may be able to address some of their concerns, we might be able to give a little different kind of plan forward.
And a better plan?
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? All right. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11098, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The bill has failed. But we will ask for the speeds, for a speed study done. Thanks, Chris. Okay, Resolution 962025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the single-source proposal of Invisia for continued use of community strategic planning and reporting software in the amount of $21,000 for a term of one year, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Are there, let's see, motion and second on Resolution 962025?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Someone give me an example of what this does?
That's, that's a good legitimate question.
I'll be glad to describe what its intent is and what, how we apply it. Basically, this is a dashboard for citizens and staff to be able to monitor progress in the comprehensive plan, in the strategic plan, I'm sorry. The strategic plan, which is a five-year updated document every five years. It is really a transparency and accountability item. I think it furthers council's desires to reach out to citizens with information that is pertinent to them and pertinent to the direction of the city.
They access it through the website?
Yes. It's on our website.
Yeah. Perfect.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I'd like to propose an amendment that we take out, just from past history here, that we just do this for a one-year contract, that we're not doing it for an extended period beyond that. There's, for up to two additional 12-month terms. I would like to have that for future council to make that decision. So that's my proposal. I don't know that that's the legal terminology.
I think the original contract was a one-year with two additional, and that was going to be my question. This one appears just to be an annual going forward. And my, is it going to be just every year now? So the original was.
I believe it's every year now.
Will come in front of council every year.
Every year.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So the original, original looked like it was a three-year contract, but it was an annual each, so, okay.
Right.
Yeah, we'll throw that.
Okay.
Additional questions? All righty. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzow?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinicker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution 972025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of TGB Incorporated in the amount not to exceed of $857,486, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $77,953 for water main replacement on Lockett Road for the Water Department, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Resolution 972025?
Motion.
All moved? Are there any questions or comments?
I do. Poor Chris. A couple of questions, you know, again, on the numbers. Do you anticipate, when do you anticipate this being completed?
We would start this once we get a contract underway, so really, this is work that we can do over the winter time. Work would probably start sometime in early January, and about a six-month timeframe to be complete in June.
But do you have a way of tracking how much money? I mean, is, will this be re-appropriated for next budget year? And how, how do we?
Some part of it, yes.
Because knowing that we've got a $4.8 million budget for this year, I was trying right now, actuals, now that we're getting monthly actuals out of this account, we have $232,000 expended, I'm assuming paid, out of this account right now. We have a.
Yeah, very little, actually.
Yeah, but, yeah, so you still have 4.6 million to spend. But we passed a resolution at the end of October for $835,000, which I'm assuming isn't going to, project going to be complete this year either?
That will not be complete as of April 1 of 2026, so that will roll over as well.
And then you've got this 857, and the next one's 122,000. So of the ones that have passed, we're at a little over 2 million, but that's actually not going to be paid for out of this current budget year, correct?
Correct.
And then, do you have a way of tracking to make sure that it's re-appropriated? Or you, do you just not spend it, and then you just try to build it into your next year's budget?
I'm responsible for making sure that it's, it's part of my job to make sure that's re-appro, or rebudgeted for next year.
So you'll know by end of March how much you've actually, out of that 4.8 million you've spent, and then how much you've re-appropriated? Do you anticipate?
We, we look at each project to see how much is remaining on that, and then rebudget that for the next fiscal year.
Chris, I have a question about the road.
Yes.
What, is it in bad shape? I mean, are, is it a road that we need to redo anyway, or?
It's only really in bad shape due to water main breaks. So in that southbound lane, you got patch after patch after patch. And so.
Seventeen.
So this, with this. But this project will pave the whole southbound lane, so all those patches will be repaved at the, at the end of the project.
Nice, smooth ride, huh? Okay. Yes, Councilwoman.
Good, you're up here. So how long are we going to be on Lindeman yet? That's the first question.
We paved today, and we're paving tomorrow, and it will be open to two-way traffic by 4:00 PM tomorrow.
Okay, so the, the reason why I'm asking this, I'm trying to be a gotcha. That's our north-south, so Lindeman's in north-south from up to, up to Manchester. Lockett's north-south up to Manchester, so you're impacting a lot of our neighborhoods around there. If we're tearing two up at the same time, nightmare with the school right there.
All the improvements on Lindeman will be complete before Lockett, any, any work on Lockett's started.
Good.
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
Congratulations on four bids. Thank you for that. And it's a local person, that's even better. Love it. Kirkwoodian, so.
Okay. What other questions? No? No? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzow?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember McLean? Councilmember Reinicker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Resolution 982025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of Intuition and Logic in the not-to-exceed amount of $122,650, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $11,150 for professional design and bid period services for water main replacement on Doherty Ferry Road for the Water Department, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Good. Do I have a motion and a second to accept Resolution 982025?
All move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Schaefer?
So.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. How long do you think this project's going to last?
So this is a design.
Correct, I know it's just.
And so, design, we anticipate it six to eight months of design, and.
When it goes out the bid, and we do it, how long do we think that'll take to replace it?
Approximately six to eight months as well.
Okay. All right, so where I'm going with this, that's right next to the high school. And so, wondering whether we can't do it, part of it at least, while the, during the height of the summer. Just putting it out there in the head, so.
Okay.
Just a thought process.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure coordination has happened with the high school, and they're informed of when we start construction.
Got it. Okay, that was it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, good idea. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzow?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinicker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Okay. Now we are at city council reports. Anything to report? Okay. Chief Administrative Officer report?
Yes, the city did receive a request from the Kirkwood Optimist Club to operate its annual fundraising tree lot at the North Middle School, with setup on November 15, 2025, and a tree lot opening on November 28, 2025, with hours of operation 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM Thursdays and Fridays, and 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Saturdays and Sundays. And this would require city council approval by voice vote.
Are there any questions or comments?
Need a motion and second.
Oh, sorry. Motion and second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Are there any?
Oh, Mr. Optimist himself.
There you go. Just wanted to put the plug in there, yes. Christmas tree lot's been going on as long as I've been in Kirkwood, which is a pretty long time. Helped out. Money all stays in town, so it doesn't, other than administrative fees that has to go to Optimists International. They do scholarships for seniors at Kirkwood High School or in the Kirkwood School District, not just for Kirkwood High School students. Been proud member and lifelong member for over 40 years, so. On this, all in favor of it?
How much does it typically raise?
About $25,000 after a lot of volunteer hours, setting up, taking down. I'm old, so I don't do a lot of that. So, but we got some young people in there that are doing it, and it's great, so. Good community.
Other question?
Just other than it's frightening that Christmas is right around the corner.
Yes! Oh, my.
Really didn't want to mention that. We really didn't want to say.
All those in favor of allowing the optimists to put up their tree lot? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. You're pulling a no.
City Attorney report?
I have nothing to report, the senior mayor.
City Clerk report?
Yes, Your Honor, I have the report of the November 5 meeting, 2025 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The following action was taken. One, after a presentation by staff and commission, discussion on revisions to applications for a major site plan for a new coffee restaurant, and a special use permit for a drive-through for Dutch Brothers at 10300 Manchester Road, which is at Green Tree Center. A subcommittee was appointed. Oh, sorry, I apologize. The commission continued consideration of the applications to their next meeting on November 19. Two, after a presentation by staff, on a staff-initiated zoning co-text amendment related to the adoption of a planned multifamily residential district, District R7. A subcommittee was appointed for that. The subcommittee will meet at Kirkwood City Hall on Monday, November 10, at 8:00 AM, after present by, presentation by staff on an application from Double Eagle Development for a zoning map amendment, B2 to R7, at 345 South Fillmore Avenue, and 336 and 340, 340 South Taylor Avenue. A subcommittee was also appointed for that.